Good morning, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting noticed for today. Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please have the roll call?
Alternate Woo?
Say, uh, unmute, please, Sandy, so we can hear you. Sandy, you're currently muted. She's waving, she's there, but we can't hear her.
Okay, we'll come back to her later then. Alternate Woo? Trustee Osaguiela?
She's not here.
She was in the waiting room and now she's not.
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee Derry?
Here.
Trustee Chen?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Sedun?
Here.
And Chairperson Domire?
Here. Thank you. The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Quell Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the Library Board of Trustees on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the Library Board of Trustees may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. To assure that everyone, including those joining us remotely, are able to hear all speakers clearly, please speak directly into a microphone. I would now like to ask management analyst Shiganaga to explain how public comment will work.
Sure. And I did want to note that Kathy is on Zoom with us now.
Thank you.
For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We will accept comments in three ways. First, we will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it in to me if you wish to speak on an item. Second, we will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raise hand function, uh, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants and then clicking on Raise Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message to us using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Lastly, I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 7:00 AM cutoff the day of a Library Board of Trustees meeting for emailed public comments. This is to ensure there is sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the Library Board of Trustees meeting. Any comments received after 7:00 AM the day of a Library Board of Trustees meeting will be included in the public comment record, but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Does anyone here wish to speak at this time? If so, please state your name and address for the record. And I see no one is physically in attendance here. Do we have any public comment requests submitted electronically?
We do not.
All right then, let's move on to our Board of Trustees reports. The first item on the agenda is my chairperson's report. Um, I just wanted to say how pleased I am that we're back in person again, almost all of us. Uh, the last time that we gathered as a board was February twenty-fourth of 2020, and the only people who were there at the time were the three of us, Lois and Genevieve and I. The rest of you hadn't been hired or were not on the board, so it's nice to have us all together. Um, I wanted to thank the staff for making this work, especially Kristen with doing the technology stuff. And I also wanted to express my appreciation for everyone's patience along the way. I mean, Zoom was convenient, but it's not the same as being in person, so thanks so much.
Steve, excuse me, we have to give a shout out to Charlie back there. We got a man behind the curtain.
I should call Charlie too.
Me and Kristen were really the backbone behind the tech, and Charlie's been instrumental in helping a lot of the commission and board meetings happen in the room here, so shout out to Charlie.
I just met Charlie this morning, yes. Sorry for missing you, a fellow left-hander. Shame on me for not doing that. Um, I hope everyone enjoyed being off in August, having the month off. Our calendar now mirrors that of the rest of the city, as do our meeting procedures. And to stay in sync with city protocols, I'm following an approved script that I have. This ensures that all, uh, the needs of all citizens will be met and that we leave nobody out. Um, I'm going to ask for your patience with me through this process because I'm not a real formal person, and I will most likely slip up and use someone's first name instead of calling you by your official title and last name, so please give me a little grace. Uh, my goal is that we're all able to provide our input and counsel, especially Sandy and Vivian, our two alternates. So it's really important your voices are heard as well. A reminder to everybody of the role of our group. Uh, the Library Board of Trustees is here to advise and inform the council on matters pertaining to the programs, materials, and services provided by the library. Um, and we are all appointed by city council, and we serve at the pleasure of the council. Um, looking forward as we head into the final quarter of 2022, we have a lot of work still to do and some many exciting library events ahead, which we'll hear about today. I do want to thank our board members for their dedication to the library and for, and to our community. You really demonstrate the willingness you have to give of your time, talent, and treasure to this. Uh, really appreciate the, the, the time you spend on this and your expertise. Um, also thanks to the city staff. I'll start with Charlie now, uh, and, and everyone else, uh, for your flexibility and quick response in these, uh, last couple of years of COVID. There's been a lot of jumping through hoops and accommodating, and, uh, it's greatly appreciated, and I'm looking forward to a very productive next three months. And that concludes my, uh, chairperson's report. The second item on the agenda are trustee reports. Do any trustees or alternates have anything to report?
Yes, I do.
Uh-oh.
A friend of mine, uh, recently moved to, uh, Sierra Madre. I went to visit her, and when I turned down her street, I found an incredible site, and I wanted to share it.
Ah.
If, um, Sierra Madre Library was built in the nineteen-fifties, sort of similar to what our original before this building was built, and it's never been remodeled. It applied with the help of Chris Holden, Assemblyman Chris Holden, and they were awarded ten million dollars. So they will, um, be working with the friends to raise additional funds, but with those two sources, they plan to, um, really improve their library. And I don't know if anyone has visited it in a while, but it's, it's got a very earthy feeling to it. Excuse me, losing my voice. And, um, very friendly. It has a cart. They're friends of the library. It's a cart. And when you select books that you want to purchase, I asked, because I said, where do I, who do I see about paying for these books? And she said, oh, there's a little red tin. You just put your, put it in. It's an honor system. And it was, that was very heartwarming. And the only other thing I wanted to add was in, um, when we were dark in August, I, we were, my family spent a week in San Diego. And, um, I made a point, and I'm sure many of you do as well, to visit libraries when you're out and about, when you're away from home. The, uh, not, it's apples and oranges. The demographics are entirely different, but it's still worth noting that the, the three hundred and fifty thousand square foot, nine-story gorgeous Architectural Digest, um, facility they've built. But when you go inside, this is what impressed me much more than the, the bricks and the, you know, mortar. What impressed me was how they had sought and really were driven to meet the needs of the community. They had programs, incredible programs. They had a program which is called READ. It's for disabled individuals. There's a lot of issues related to that. They had a whole wing for veterans when they have a large military base in San Diego. And when these people leave, they need additional help in, um, writing resumes and so forth. They do that. The literacy program there taps into, you, you see San Diego and San Diego State to get professionals to help, and they have around-the-clock literacy programs. Um, and I could just go, they have the largest baseball memorabilia outside of Cooperstown, New York. So it, it's a myriad of activities, but the underlying theme is inclusiveness. It's, it's, how can we enrich our lives? And we want to offer you ways in which to advance your lives through the resources we have here. And then both of those things, both the, the sign and this, just reminded me of the treasures that libraries provide to communities.
Thank you so much. Great. Move on. Lois, anything?
Do you want to report on the friends?
No, not yet. Just anything separate than that?
No.
Okay, great. Genevieve?
No.
All right. Kathy, via Zoom, do you have anything to report? Is that no? Okay. Said no? No, okay, good. All right. Sandy? Anything? No, nothing too. We're doing the signings. Great.
You should be able to unmute yourselves. I modified the settings.
What's that?
I was letting them know that they can unmute themselves.
Okay, great.
Do you want to test that real quick? Just to give them an opportunity to make sure we're connected to them.
Sandy's, uh, doing it with her iPad. I can tell because of the hand. It's very hard to operate it. Hi Kathy.
Hello, hi.
Great. We can hear you terrific. Thanks so much.
Hello.
Hi Sandy, good. We can hear you. Great.
Morning.
Maybe he has to stand at the podium if we want to hear her. You don't need to do it, but we know you can do that. Great. Okay. Uh, let's move on then to the third item on our agenda is the Crane Art Gallery Liaison Report. Can we have a report from Vice Chairperson Sedun?
Yes, um, the, um, last installed in the Crane Gallery was a wonderful new exhibit, which will, actually this Saturday, in this room, will be the reception for the paintings of the Plenar artists. This is a group of about twenty people. I knew one individual, and she was a dentist, and she dabbled in painting, but she just recently retired. She joined the group, and one of her paintings are out there. So I have a personal interest. I won't be down this Saturday, but I encourage everyone and anyone to attend.
What time?
Uh, two to four.
Two to four.
But, um, of course, so this one will continue till October twenty-seventh. And of course Linda Lyons was extremely instrumental, as she always is, in helping them install it. Um, this will be followed, uh, mid-November, November twelfth, by, uh, Art Bario and Linda Malonow. She, her exhibit will come up. I don't know what she's calling it, but, um, her reception is also going to be on a Saturday, Saturday, December third, from two to four. Uh, finally, Cindy Chan will, um, put our historical materials of San Marino and the library in the gallery in January, because, um, it will coincide with the open house at the end of January, I believe. And we were dark also, the committee, uh, in August, and then early September, there was the air conditioning issues which prevented us from meeting, but there are several proposals for, uh, new exhibits, so we plan to meet in October, and if we agreed upon, we'll offer those starting in March. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Uh, the fourth item on our agenda is the San Marino Center renovation update report, and that's me again. Uh, this is one of the exciting events I referred to earlier in my chairperson's report. The groundbreaking ceremony for the San Marino Center renovation is this Thursday at nine AM. I'm encouraging everyone to attend this historic event. It's the beginning of what was an estimated eighteen-month, uh, project, which could be less than that, we'll see. Uh, it's going to result in a beautiful, multi-use facility that will enhance and complement our very own library. There's going to be work done on the connection between the two that will link the two buildings together. Um, and as representatives of the library, it would be wonderful to have you in attendance, so if you could please come and show your support for this project, that would be this Thursday, nine AM, and, and wear your badge. Don't do like I did today. Wear your badges so we can show that we are the Library Board of Trustees, and we support it. Okay. Apparently, there's going to be refreshments too, so that's why I'll be there. Uh, and, and does anybody have any questions on the San Marino Center or anything they want to add?
I just have a fun comment. Um, it was discovered that there is actually a time capsule that was placed, and if you guys read about it, um, but underneath the cornerstone at the entrance, the women's club did place some historic artifacts, and they're going to be unearthed, so to speak, this week. Uh, and then there'll be some, uh, discussion, uh, probably about what was found and the condition and, and what, what's inside. So it's kind of a fun, interesting part of the ceremony on Thursday.
Thank you. Um, any other questions, comments? Great. Let's move on then to the fifth item on our agenda is the Friends of the Quell Public Library Liaison Report. Can we have a report from trustee Derry?
Well, I was glad we can. Last one, I tried to, and they didn't give me, or they didn't let me in, to be perfectly honest. They had the doors closed. Anyway, this one was fine. And, uh, they have a new president, Muffy Hawn, who is, you know.
My conscience, because we are recording.
Yeah, there's no such thing. Okay, Muffy has been involved in the library for years, and she is a real dynamite person, and, um, I think she'll be good for the friends. And they also have a woman who's the secretary. They got me the minutes that day instead of a month later. And so I think they're really, uh, doing very well, and they have plans to advertise in the, um, upcoming, uh, events with the foundation. And they're now open on Saturday, uh, afternoon for two, uh, two hours, for twelve to, uh, two. Uh, their big problem, I think, is Kathy Miller and another woman do unbelievable amount of physical work. They had to take all the books out of the San Marino Center and move them over here. I mean, and books are heavy, you know, and they're working really hard, and I think they really need to get some, maybe some young people to help with some of that carving. But I think they're doing well. They're doing some advertising, and money-wise, of course, now that COVID is over with, their revenue should move up again. It was very good.
Thank you so much. Uh, the sixth item on our agenda is the San Marino Public Library Foundation Liaison Report. Have a report from trustee Chen.
I do. Good morning, everyone. This is a fun one. Um, I have attended two meetings. Um, one, oh, so they have been working so diligently, and we are close, getting really close to our events. And, um, many, um, ideas has been proposed. They're talking about maybe having picture opportunity for, because I think that's more trendy thing, weddings or special events. Now they're thinking about having, uh, picture opportunity, and also dressing up for the characters from literatures, so you could guess who they were. Um, the board members are most likely going to dress up, but I, I can't guarantee for them. Um, and all the, uh, trustee on the library board are, we're, they're asking us to support them by any means, you know, showing up or dressing up if you may. So that's, um,
The literary libations event, right?
This is what, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, um, the next thing is they have been successfully, um, securing for, uh, procurements or sponsorship. So far, I think twenty-two thousand has been, uh, secured, but there's always room for more. And, uh, they have food. That's a big thing that, uh, being worked on. Between sushi, poke and steak, those are the big items that it's costly, and they need to really figure it out, the menu item. And they have been working on it diligently, looking for chefs or restaurants able to do this for them. And then, um, adult reading station and the, um, children reading station, that's going to be where the food station going to be at. Um, reference probably where beer is maybe served. I don't know if we want to get, uh, detail, but, um, they're currently still, um, applying for all kinds of permits. It requires tons of permits. So the amount of work that Cindy and the rest, the board member are working on is tremendous. It's just, we're very lucky to have our foundation supporting us. Another interesting thing I found was there's one charity, um, organization that Cindy Chan has reached out for. They are, um, specialized in safari, um, but it's about gaming. Did I say all right? It's kind of like hunting.
Big game hunting?
Yeah. So the debate is, is our community ready for that kind of auction? This is for, uh, auction item. So this is how, this has not been, um, decided on, but, um, they're wondering if our community is ready for this, or sightseeing is more safer.
Really?
We decided against it at that time, but I guess we will visit again, and, um, I'm sure they want to take, give a consensus.
That, that.
And they'll act, you know, responsibly after that.
That's exactly, I mean, the, um, it's not an official vote. I think they were just asking for opinion.
Yeah.
And it's still probably fifty-fifty. Some have reservation on whether this community is ready for that, but if it's just pure sightseeing, then that's a no-brainer, but, um, not sure if we're ready, even though those are not the endangered animals that's being hunted. It, they said was wild boar or something like that.
Okay.
So that, that's.
That's up for them to decide.
Yeah, that's on the agenda. They're deciding. So, um, it's going well.
Good, good.
And I'm very excited, and I haven't bought tickets. I will.
Ah.
Yeah, it's all about ticket sales at this point, so.
Oh, that's right. Yes, Lois is our sponsor. Lois has already sponsored, yes.
If you're considering buying a ticket, you can purchase at the library here, so we are also selling tickets.
Can I ask a question? Um, do you take checks or credit card? Yes.
Then sell.
I think that was also something that was talked about, whether, uh,
Yeah, we implemented that a couple of weeks ago.
They have, yeah, great. So shout out to our library, uh, our city staffs. They've been so supportive. I saw how late they have to work till. Um, it was, uh,
What time do ours, is, was it nine o'clock? You guys were still there?
Yeah. So shout out to our city staff.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Let's move on. The seventh item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. Are there any questions from the board? No, I would like to open up the item for public comments. I, no one's here, but in case anyone would hear, we invite them to speak at this time, but there isn't anybody. Did we have any public comment requests submitted electronically regarding our minutes?
We do not.
All right. Uh, so I'll bring the item back to the board for discussion. Are there any comments or questions from the board regarding our minutes from our last meeting, which was back July twenty-fifth? Kathy or Sandy, comments, questions?
Yeah.
Okay, these are the, the more truncated minutes. All right. All right. Do we have a motion to approve minutes?
It's a move.
Lois moves it. Do I have a second? Okay, great. Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please? I'll give you a moment to write all that down.
Okay, trustee Osaguiela?
Approve.
Trustee Derry? Trustee Chen?
Approved.
Vice Chairperson Sedun? And Chairperson Domire?
Approved. Thank you. Uh, the eighth item on our agenda is the Director and Library Manager Report. Can we please have a presentation from Community Services Director Johnson and Library Manager Vera?
Good morning, everybody, and it is so nice to be here in person with you all. So, um, with that, uh, we hope that you've had an opportunity to review the report and the packet in its entirety, so we will just touch on some high points. Um, I always start this report with personnel and some updates there. We are fully staffed at our full-time level, so that's good to know with the onset of, uh, Danell joining our team a couple of months ago. Uh, and we are, uh, working diligently to fill all of our vacant part-time positions. Um, the library AC status update, hopefully you guys have read that. Uh, new equipment is coming. We've got a cooling center scheduled for today at the Stoneman Facility. So we were crossing our fingers all weekend that the AC was going to hold with the rising temp that we did experience this weekend. We did not have to modify our hours this weekend, so that was, um, you know, wonderful to not have to, uh, impact um, hours of operation over the weekend, and maybe this is going to be the last of the heat wave that we get here in Southern California. We, uh, we did, um, operate a cooling center for those ten days that, uh, a couple of weeks ago. So I did some numbers. The staff, uh, from Community Services really pulled together. It was originally scheduled to be in here in the bar. With the AC challenges, we had to quickly pivot, and prior to the fencing going up and the actual construction beginning, uh, we were able to utilize San Marino Center. And we served, um, close to four hundred or fifty people during that time. They really appreciated.
Wow.
Yeah, over the ten-day period, they really appreciated, um, at least having someplace to go. We, uh, also provided free Wi-Fi, so, and we provided water. So we were, you know, uh, even though the library was, um, you know, out of commission, so to speak, during that really peak time, we utilized the assets that we did have to continue to provide that very valuable, you know, kind of emergency service. So, um, I was very proud of the team, both, uh, library rec, we come together, we use our staffing resources, and everybody just pivots, and we say, okay, yeah, we're, we're running the library, San Marino Center is down, but you know what? We are so, um, uh, in, in times of crisis, um, we are, the Community Services folks are the ones who typically can, um, adapt and, and pivot resources to meet the needs of whatever's in front of us, much like during the pandemic and the different deployment of staff to outside their regular jobs. So we were, we were pleased to do that and proud that we're able to do that, and we're learning Linda and Eddie, um, I would like to, um, you know, I, I've helped them to, to understand that we really need to write down SOPs. So we are ready. We did not have an SOP that we could, a playbook.
Standard.
A standard operating procedures or a playbook, right? Like just our process and procedure. How do you open and close a cooling center in a city property? What are, what's the list of things to do and the process and the protocol? So we were able to then capture that. So next time we have to do it, you know, we can hand that to somebody and say, here, staff, this is how we do it. And so, uh, Eddie and, and Linda took a, a great run at that, and we, we pulled together and, and we're ready to do it again. So that's a big takeaway from that experience. Um, next, I wanted to mention that, um, our department also, uh, works with the Recreation Commission, and, uh, they came off of hiatus. We have a new list of commissioners that I've, I've listed in my report, and we congratulate them for their, um, service that they'll be providing to the city. Um, the bathroom with, uh, the fact that the, um, San Marino Center is officially out of commission and under renovation. Uh, city spaces for public meetings and public gatherings are, uh, few and far between. So this space, the bathroom, is really, really in high So this space, the bathroom, is really, really in high demand. And it it's, it's, it's pretty tight in terms of maintaining current levels of programming and also all the public meetings and staff trainings and things like that, that we use city properties and city spaces for. So, you know, I really appreciate staff and all the hard work to keep that high level of coordination that we're able to then respond and support all the setup takedowns. Again, recreation staff do a phenomenal job. That is a hat that they also wear to, you know, on the backend, prepare these meeting spaces. And then transition them from meeting space to a program space to whatever, however, we're using the space. And this, this, this area right here is a hot commodity right now. So if you ever hear that you couldn't get into the bathroom or you got deployed up to the conference room upstairs, it's because there's a lot of advisory bodies, staff trainings, programming. It's, it's, it's a high demand space and we're doing our best to prioritize it accordingly. The next is the, I asked Cindy to again dovetail off of Genevieve's report on the, their kind of operational report. That was nice. She gave a little highlight to what their Committee for Literary Libations is going to. And I think, again, I'd like to just emphasize it's all about ticket sales. That's going to help them, you know, really get that revenue that they need, ticket sales sponsorship. So if you haven't bought tickets for your family and friends, please, please come. And it certainly supports everything that we do here. And Linda and I will be in attendance. There'll be several staff members at that event helping out and hoping to make it again another successful fundraiser with the beneficiaries of the, you know, us and staff and city operations here at the library being, you know, the recipients of all the hard work that the foundation does. Then we have our upcoming events. So please mark your calendar. I hope you you've looked at all those great things we have going at Lacy Park and here at the library. Our friends at the Historic Society have a meeting. You know, we like to list everything, stakeholders, partners, programming. And we love to see our trustees in attendance as as often as possible. I will close my comments now and let Linda take over under the operational staff briefings. If there's anything you'd like to highlight, Linda?
Nope, we're, we're excited to begin offering programs. Again, there's a lot of things in the works. We're kind of playing around. And I think that word has gotten out that we're back open for business, which is really exciting. You know, we're having community members come in and and talk to us about programs that once were and, you know, what could be. So it's, it's been lovely to really start getting that input from the public as we plan winter.
So with that being said, we in our, we're in our production of the Community Services Guide, Planning for Winter Programming. And that's always a big drill for, for it's about probably ten people that contribute to program and services. It's a, it's a huge collaborative process to put that guide together. If you have any suggestions, comments, feedback on how we can continue to make that our core marketing piece a little bit better, more readable. You know, if there's anything that you just, please feel free to reach out to me. And I'm the pseudo editor. So please let me know. But we're in production and as Linda said, program planning is underway. We that we, we continue to drive our, our social media presence. We know that that's where a lot of eyes are, is in that social media lane. And with that being said, that completes our report.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Question. With the bathroom being in high demand, are, are the revenues up for rentals or these also?
These are non, yeah, yeah, they're, it's, it's, it's more, you know, internal city use. So.
And how about when this was originally set up for the cooling center? What popped to my mind right away was, and you may have gone over this in the past and before I came on to the board, about filtration systems. There was a great upgrade done during, during the pandemic because you're bringing numerous people together. That's been shown on, you know, the hospitals, the medical centers. They went out and immediately increased because they felt that's a good way to stay safe.
And that is a wonderful observation. Our, the property management role and function for the city falls underneath our Parks and Public Works Department. They maintain the physical property and we are in transition with the leadership of that department. Since April, the director position's been vacant, but they are getting ready to make, make a, well, hopefully, appoint a new director. So unfortunately, we haven't, I don't believe there, it was budgeted for any HVAC or filtration upgrades in the upcoming C I P versus, or any, yeah, that would be an upgrade probably. But I will certainly pass it on to the new person that we would love to, once we get the, the HVAC system healthy again with, you know, all new functioning equipment. Can we please take a look at really the, the, you know, ventilation and upgrading that as well?
I would imagine the redo of the San Marino Center, it's going to have updated ventilation to it, but that's something we could certainly.
We had no playbook as such for the pandemic.
Yeah.
It came on very quickly and I, I agree with all the comments shared, how quickly the library has pivoted, how it kept in touch with its, with its patrons and the community. And now that you're able, I see you went to the back to school nights, Linda. Did you?
Tara attended the back to school night?
Yeah, of course. Oh, Tara. I didn't, didn't make note of that. That's great. And we're really getting out and we're really re-inviting. And I think it's going to, as you said, the numbers are going to just come right back, maybe exceed what they were. And all these programs sound phenomenal. You could, as I always say, make a full time job out of it. Well, well done.
Thank you.
And just to note, those are a combined list from the Recreation Division as well as Library, Community Services as well. Yeah. The other thing that, back to the, the facility and property management. It was agreed by the interim director and I that, as I, being new to the city and understanding how proactive we are with preventative maintenance schedules. And that unfortunately has been maybe due to staff capacity. They really weren't able to have a good PM, as we call it, a PM program or preventative maintenance program for all city properties. Well, I'm going to be at the table with the new person saying, you know, we really need to stay ahead of it. And that maybe the, the air conditioner, you know, system, the compressor, we might have been able to avoid that had we known that maybe it had met its useful life and it should have been replaced. That, you know, it, there was some agreement that, you know, we could probably do a little bit better job as a city staff to get ahead of those as if we had preventative maintenance schedules in all facilities.
Any other questions from the board regarding the report?
I have a question. I don't quite the right place. I read someplace that we are now going or soon going to be able to renew passports online.
This is news to me. Tell me more.
It's, it's something, it's out there and not yet, but that's going to be, that will be a real thing for the library. You haven't heard anything about it?
I have not. No.
I hope it's a long ways away.
Sounds like federal news. I'll have to check it out.
I'd like to open up the item for public comments. No, does anyone want to speak at this time? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Okay. Do we have any public comment requests submitted electronically?
We do not.
Okay. At this time, I'll bring the item back to the board for discussion. Any comments or questions from the board? We've kind of already asked for comments, but any questions from Sandy or Vivi that we haven't covered? No. Yes, Kathy?
I do have a quick question about the staffing. I know there were the, they did hiring of some part time. I just want to know how many still are the empty part time staff, library positions?
Staffing is what she was saying.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So at the paraprofessional, part time library, part time library assistant level, we're looking to hire, if memory serves me correctly, it was two in adult services and two, two, three perhaps in children's services. And then after that, we're going to be staffing up with the clerks. So the very frontline staff members, and we're going to take a look because we've had some shedding towards the end of the pandemic through now. And so we want to be able to see how we can, you know, maximize that budget and get people out there for you.
And back in our meeting in July, the question was raised about what the, what the payment is for attracting and hiring new talent here? And were we on par with everything else? And the question came up, would the city, would the staff be able to look into that? And the answer was no, it's not really their purview to look at competitive rates of other people like that. But that's something perhaps we could be taking on. We could do our own research as a board and look and see what other, whether communities are paying their peoples that we remain competitive. But it's not necessarily a, a city staff was not designated to do that. So if, if someone wants to volunteer to do that research on the board, we're more than welcome to do that. And as advocates for the library, we want to make sure that we're able to attract and retain top quality talent and pay competitively. So if anyone is interested in doing that, by all means, volunteer to do so. We can pull that, that information together and, and, and analyze that. Any other comments, questions? All right then. We don't need to, we're just, we're just accepting your report. I suppose we don't need a motion for that. Okay, let's move on to the ninth item on the agenda is the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty two budget donation monitors. Can we have a presentation from Community Services Director Johnson and Management Analyst Shikinaga?
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. For those of you that are new, as well as maybe returning, last year we revamped the fiscal reporting for the library operating budget as well as the donation monitor. When I first got here, I felt that the reporting was somewhat cumbersome. The reports could be a little more clear and more streamlined. I felt that reporting every month was a little overkill and a waste of time. So working with prior trustees and our finance director Chung, I, and obviously with Kristen, we spent, as well as our council liaison. We got some feedback from them and it was agreed upon that reporting quarterly was probably, you know, a little more effective for, for time, staff time, as well as meeting time. We reformatted the report, so it's a little cleaner. That would be the front report that says budget monitor quarterly report. So the columns, you can see, we, we, we put the quarters, the, the fiscal quarters in the middle there. Then we start with the budget, then the fiscal quarters, and then the year end total. This particular report is the year end report for the prior fiscal year. And our fiscal year runs July one through June thirty. We have to wait for the finance department to sort of tie out and close out the fiscal year before we can produce this report. So you won't be getting it, even though, you know, the fiscal year ends in, in June. You're not going to get this right away because, you know, there's that lag. The, the really high level good news is that we ended the year well under budget. The, from a revenue perspective, which is the, the top green portion, we clearly came in well over budget, thanks to passports, passport revenue. On the expense side, you would expect a little bit of this underspending because of our staff vacancies. We were down fifty percent full time folks and those people are the ones who do a lot of the spending. Okay, as well as so from our personnel line item, as well as our procurement of, of materials and resources and collection development. It, I refer to that as, you know, capacity, organizational capacity. We just didn't have the capacity. So then obviously our revenue or expenses are going to lag and they're going to be well under budget. So that then allowed us to have a, a, it's not a fun balance, but we, we just, you know, we came in well under budget this year. So and then hopefully next year, we will, you know, hit all of our, our budgets and all of our targets. That's the goal. Then moving on to the donation monitor. And let me make a pause really quick. Hopefully you were able to read the staff report that, that essentially gleams the big takeaways from both of these reports. Again, if you have any questions, please, it's, Kristen and I are here to answer those. We do, the other thing that I included was I added, when I was revamping these reports, I added that column section on the right, which gives a comment per line item. So we're trying to explain a variance, whether it's up or down, right? So you should be able to read, you know, a fairly simple financial report that isn't confusing but provides enough information where there's clarity and understanding. So.
I'd like to go on record in saying I find this very effective.
Thank you.
I have, I know you must put a lot of time and thought into this.
Kristen, Kristen and I, I, I can't take all the credit. I have done financials for many, many years of my career. Kristen was an awesome collaborator. She was the Excel guru and took all of the, no, I need you to do this. I need you to tweak it. And so we, we really worked well together and we're very, quite very proud of the fact that we, and we appreciate the acknowledgement.
And it's something that's a valuable resource now. When it was so detailed, it was beyond my capabilities. And this, I really could make heads and tails and sense of things. So I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So do you guys have any questions for me or for Kristen? Let me ask Kristen. I told her I might lob it to you because she is, she has a wonderful grasp of this. I need to give her nothing but, you know, accolades for her preparation and detail. Is there anything I missed, Kristen, that you felt is noteworthy?
Maybe just on the donations report, just that the reserve balances will get updated by our finance department. I think in October or November. So the table in the top right corner, I think Deborah touched on this at the last meeting about the Crane Art Gallery reserves. So that'll get updated in a couple of months, probably in the quarter one report.
Any other questions from the board on this report? Kathy or Sandy? My glasses. Yes, Kathy.
I do have a quick one. Is there any type of a savings account the library has for a rainy day? Because.
Well, we are part of the general fund, so we are not, we're not like a special revenue fund.
You know, so I wonder where this.
You kind of cut out there. Could you repeat yourself?
Me?
Yeah, Kathy, could you repeat the question, please?
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry. I just was wondering if, if there's any type of savings account that the rolling money goes to for a rainy day or what happened with all these surpluses that were not used last fiscal year?
Because we are part of the general fund, it just goes back into the, the bigger piece of the pie. It doesn't affect, you know, any, you know, going forward, they're not going to lower our subsidy or our, you know, because we didn't spend. So it was just a reality of, of, you know, post pandemic or, you know, coming recovery from the pandemic, staffing challenges, you know, management change. But it won't affect our allocation, if you will, going forward. And no, we do not have our owner's or fund that, that any. that that any operational savings just goes back into the general fund.
I think that's kind of the role of the foundation trying to set up their, their their endowment. So.
Yeah, which is for capital improvements.
Right.
Yeah. And then if we need, if we as a city need capital improvement projects, you know, I can, we can do that. We can ask for that. Anything that might be outside of what the foundations kind of role and function is. So we, we wouldn't, I won't hesitate to submit capital improvement dollars through the CIP program, which is kind of a larger citywide program. But, you know, they don't want to see me come in because I, I'm not afraid to ask for what I believe to keep safe, you know, safe, well-maintained facilities. And if the foundation isn't able to do that, then we will make sure those requests are in there. So.
Sandy, did you, did you have a question?
No question.
Okay, Vivi, anything you wanted to? Okay, great. All right, uh, let's see, public comments, still no one showing up. So there's no one here to speak. Do we have any public comment requests electronically? No.
None.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Let's move on then to the 10th item on the agenda is the library closure calendar for 2023. Can we please have a presentation from Library Manager Vera?
All right. So what you see here is a list of the, the dates that we would either, that we're going to request that we close or alter the schedule. That that really only applies to one day, which is Wednesday, November 22nd. That happens to be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and seeing as how the library is a bit of a ghost town, it was difficult to justify maintaining operations through nine o'clock. The rest of these are really standard. They are harkening back to pre-pandemic practices, including the closure of the library on January 16th, Martin Luther King Junior Day. That day is generally reserved here for staff training and we would like to resume that practice.
Terrific. Any questions from the board? Regarding the closure dates? No? Okay, let's open the item up for public comments. Still no one's here to speak at this time. Any public comment requests electronically regarding our closure dates?
None.
None. All right. Any comments or questions from the board? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the, the calendar? Okay, do I have a second? Such a polite board, such a polite board. All right. Could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Osaguiela.
Kathy? We're, we're voting on the library, the calendar for closure dates for next year. Could you unmute, please? Kathy, can you hear us? We're, we're voting on the library closure dates. Can you, can you unmute? And there was a motion to approve the calendar dates in a second and now we're voting on it.
Sorry, it got all cut off, but yes, approved.
Okay, great.
Trustee Derry?
I approve.
Trustee Chen?
Approve.
Vice Chairperson Sedun? And Chairperson Domire?
Approve.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Very, oh, are we on to the 11th item already? Good for us. The 11th item is the final report on accomplishments from the 2016, 2020, 2016, 21 Strategic Plan. Can we have a presentation from Community Services Director Johnson and Library Manager Vera?
Okay, the, this was a really important exercise for, for the new staff to, to go through. Excuse me. Many of us, as you know, we're not here when this plan was developed. The institutional knowledge that was, that was, you know, really remained within the library division was with a couple of key full-time folks, Jeff Plumley and Tara Torres. Nobody else was here. We have a new management analyst, a new library manager, a new department head. And so I, I have to give Linda a lot of credit for this report. I essentially worked with the, with, you know, the team to say, here's the approach and the strategy I think we need to take. Since none of us really have that knowledge and we weren't part of that process. So Linda did a phenomenal job of having really important working meetings with Jeff and Tara and Kristen was involved too. And we've put together for you a report that in our most humble opinions represent a, the outcomes of that plan and the progress that was made for all of, for that roadmap and the hopes and the goals that were put in place back in 15 and 16 when the plan was developed. So I am going to hand the, the report, I'm kind of teeing it up here. And then I'm going to give it to Linda because she again, and Jeff and Tara really did the analysis and assessment of this and I can take no credit. I just helped package it. And Kristen was there too to help kind of pull this together in a way that would report back to you. You know, really the important outcomes. So with that being said, take it away, Linda.
So you have in front of you the strategic plan. And as I was reviewing it and getting familiar with it, you know, one of the wonderful things about it is that it really does touch on all aspects of library service. So you, you know, you have customer service, there's programming that's involved, maintaining your collection is in there and it's wonderful. Overall, the, the initiatives that are in here or the goal areas are great, ongoing best practices. So one of the examples that I highlighted in there was there, there's talk of refreshing the collection and making sure that it's modern and current, which is incredibly important if you're going to continue to remain relevant to the community. And as such, that's something that you need to fold into your workflow consistently. Not just as part of a strategic plan. So, you know, the library Board of Trustees, as they developed these things, it's a really great document to go back to and make sure that, hey, we are still doing these things, not this one time for the strategic plan, but always, you know, we need to always be gathering community input for what programs matter right now. And we need to always make sure that we are meeting people where they are, whether they're in person or whether they're online. So we definitely appreciate all of the work that went into this. And it is, it is a wonderful set of ongoing best practices. So and I don't know, did you have any questions or was there anything that you found, I don't know, interesting?
I've got plenty to say on this. Do you, okay, well, first of all, I wanted to thank you for this work because I hadn't really realized when I was asking for the update on the strategic plan because I, my, my pet peeve is when groups get together, come up with a five-year plan and then the five years come and go and nobody ever looks back at it. So I really appreciated the immense amount of work that was put into this because I didn't really appreciate at the time how much it was. I also didn't realize that the 2016, 2021 Strategic Plan was 37 pages long. So Vice Chair Sedun, you were here when that went, can you address a little bit of why this was so incredibly detailed and how and what the process was and undertaking all of this? You were on the board at the time, correct?
I believe I was, but I, it was just, it was presented as such and and that they felt that was covering everything they wanted to cover at the time. I remember that they, it was important to them that they get a lot of input even from outside of the library. They wanted to have, if my memory is correct, they spent an enormous amount of time because they thought it was that important to get people from schools, from other community groups. They really want to be sure that it addressed all the needs and it was a lengthy and in-depth report. You know, that's my reflection was.
Yeah, it's, I, I appreciate the hard work that went into creating that, that initial report and that translated to a lot of work on your parts to try and go, well, yeah, this is what libraries should be doing. It's just a basic thing. I, and, and when asking for sort of a top level, what got done, what didn't get done, I wasn't expecting this incredible level of sophistication either. So kudos to you for doing that. Every little thing is detailed in specifics there. That's really easy to see and a shocking number of things were actually accomplished. A very few were not implemented. You know, and part of that had to do with the, the pandemic, but it's just amazing how much of the stuff that was detailed did get achieved. Do we have other comments or questions from the, the rest of the board before I make some final comments? Yeah.
I think this is great. This is almost like a report card.
Yes.
I like that. It's almost like when you're home, you have tons of things that you need to do and you cross them out.
And I think it's important that we memorialized the outcome. Staff, I, I think Linda would agree that this was an incredibly helpful in-depth, you know, reflection of, of even though the organization has gone through or the, the division has gone through a lot of growing pains, weathered a pandemic. We, we still had some continuity of service and being new to the team, that being able to look in the rearview mirror and learn and understand where we've been and where we are today is going to help us go forward. And so I, I mean, it was an incredible exercise. We appreciate being, being asked to do it. I think it, it really, you know, Linda is new at the helm of the, of the division and this unearthed all sorts of rocks and all sorts of stuff. Hey, what about, you know, it was a, it was an incredibly valuable exercise and we're pleased to be able to, to do that and and, and I think we're positioned nicely to then, you know, this doesn't go away. It's a foundational building block to, and it'll be an important part of where we're going in the future.
Well, and that kind of leads me to my last question. I was, my question was going to be, how do we proceed in creating a new strategic plan? I don't know if we need a new strategic plan. Maybe we just need goals to set. I think a lot of the issues, some of these things where they weren't measurable goals to achieve. So it's kind of hard. Well, did we do that or did we not? So, so just from your standpoint, both, both, Library Manager, both of you, what do you think we need moving forward to go? How do we set these milestones for us to achieve to ensure that we're, we're moving ahead in the library?
I'm going to take a, a crack at this, Linda, if you don't mind. Because planning, the planning function is incredibly valuable and important to any organization, right? And being able to do planning well in my, you know, 25 plus years of public service, it's incredibly helpful to have a third-party objective body come in and facilitate this process. This was a staff-driven and with the, with the advisory body, very much from what we could see walking hand in hand with staff to develop this at the time, maybe they didn't have the resources. A best practice, planning process is to really use a third-party facilitator. Because then that then, you know, and they're professionals at creating a strategic operating plan that might not be a five-year plan, but really it, there, I think there's a value in just a three-year plan. Okay. And so I'm going to be hope, hoping to, to be able to secure those funds to hire a, a consultant group that is an expert at public planning, working with public entities and hopefully libraries. Okay. And then, and so hopefully securing the funds for that planning initiative, then, then that, that person is a partner with the city that then does the public outreach. They know how to do surveying. Okay, staff doesn't have to do it. We're not the experts of this. Okay. Plus we have a library to run and programs to plan and, you know. So hopefully in the next six months and maybe through the next budget cycle, I'm going to be able to get that, that, those planning dollars set aside and then hopefully we'll be able to spend six months during a planning process where we will be able to use a third-party facilitator, professional organization with expertise in libraries, help us develop a new roadmap, but with the inclusion of the community as well all of our community partners and stakeholders, facilitating those meetings, gathering that input. There's a, that, there's a lot of expertise that goes into that, gathering all that, synthesizing it and then developing a draft plan that then comes back to a board, you know, gets through the, the proper approval process. So as well as being able to identify budget, you know, a budget impact to this. So that's my hope and goal. I do have it as one of my, on my work plan for the department to sort out how we're going to get a new strategic operating plan for the Community Services Department, first off. Okay, but then specifically the, the library division in the Coral Public Library. So that's what I hope to be able to present to you, working with staff in the next six to 12 months.
And I, I think that's a terrific idea, failing that, if that doesn't go through, if they decide not to spend the money, how do we, what, how do we have goals set up that, that just for the library that we would be?
I think between, I have enough professional expertise. We are professionals. We do, I have a lot of experience with this. And if it's just a matter of, of putting operating goals into place, Linda and I are going to be very skilled at being able to set those priorities as part of the budget process.
And the reason I ask the question is because a, a, a 37-page document to me seems like overkill to, to do something to, I mean, I, great that it's all complete and great to have outside contracts and all that, but just having something a little bit more simple, measurable, achievable seems a little more reasonable. If you can get the funds to have an outside person come in, that's great. But, but just something that's kind of like what you did with the budget monitor and all that kind of stuff, the simplification of it makes it more digestible and easy to, to comprehend. And I, and I totally disagree with the mission statement that they came up with. It's not a mission statement at all. So hopefully moving forward, we come up with a better way to define.
And often that's part of planning too.
Yeah.
You know, that planning, Linda, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I, I think that it's with a little bit of effort and input from the community, we could certainly quantify some of our services. Like, you know, how many programs are you offering to this particular age group that meet 21st century learning skills?
Right.
Of those, what percentage, you know, are we skewing too heavy in this or that particular area? We need more balance. What is it that we can supplement? And then setting a target, whether it's, you know, a number of programs or a percentage of programs or services that will then meet those needs. So, you know, just, just smaller, shorter timeframes and things that are really, really easy to just bullet point. You know, did we truly offer, did we ensure that 30% of our programs are actually supporting critical thinking, right? Or executive function skills that we know are the underpinning of not just educational and professional success, but life success. You know, and how are we spelling that out for you so that way you know that as we do these different programs that they are indeed hitting these goals every time.
Terrific. That's, that's great. Any other comments from any other board members, Vivi or Sandy? Again, thank you for the immense work. Oh, sorry, Janine, I missed you.
Any idea how much would that third-party cost?
You know, they'll, it's probably between, you know, on low, there would be a range because boy, they'll, they'll, they'll do big scopes of analysis. You know, probably anywhere from low end to get a really good quality, you know, product, maybe 25,000 to. Maybe 25,000 to 40 or 50,000 on the high.
Yeah. The reason I asked is to see how likely I'm gonna get that.
Well, you know, the city is in a very healthy position right now.
I am.
Overall, so, you know, and it's, it's, um, the, this, this, uh, exercise or, or this type of, um, initiative should be happening. You know, planning happens in all city departments. There's a general plan. There's operating plans for every single department or there should be. Okay?
And keep in mind, this is not just the library. It would be for all the community services, which would be.
Right.
As well.
Right.
So it'd be a large.
And there's some value there because, you know, there's a reason why the department has the two divisions because we have resources that it's just logical. We share facilities. Um, we share staffing resources. Um, we, um, uh, we, we have now a new campus. I think we were positioned to really say, how can we ensure that with the investment of the San Marino Center, that the vision of this community services campus, that we have a roadmap to activate this, this area and this, the, this asset for the city where it is truly a community hub. Okay? Uh, for, for, you know, all of those wonderful quality of life services for the city. Where's that roadmap that's going to help? I mean, we can do this, but we want to make sure that we've got some community engagement and our stakeholders and partners are able to collaborate with us. So that's the value that a plan like that would bring, that we can have, we can build a beautiful, new, you know, renovated facility. There's this vision for this campus. Okay? Give us that. Let's all collaborate and have a good solid roadmap.
I think exactly what you just said in the last minute or two would be the selling point and your, that should be your presentation to.
Yeah, yeah. And, and it was, you know, it would be.
Sold.
Cause I, I'm, you know, I, uh, you know, I, I know that, the, uh, having this, being able to tell that story and say, here's what we believe and we're the professionals. I would say and paid for knowing a little something. But, uh, if, if we don't drive that, you know, kind of, uh, up, you know, communicate up and tell a, a good story, uh, and, and get our, um, our partners to advocate for us. And much like our library board and our foundation, you know, help be our advocates. And so we shall see. Uh, I will be talking with city manager, you know, as we get into this next year, we prepare for budget. Um, I know there's a lot of planning, uh, discussion in other departments as well. Updating of the general plan. How do all of these concurrent kind of layering plans for the city, how do they work together? So, I mean, is everything in life as they say as well?
Okay. Any other comments? Skip anybody? Now, any public comments? Any, any written communication or public writings for distribution? Thanks again for that report. Um, with that, we are adjourned. The meeting is adjourned at 9:15 until the next meeting on October 24th at 8:00 AM here in the bathroom and via Zoom. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.